Okay, we'll call it July first, meeting of Lock Haven City Council, please rise, because I'm gonna sign a trial by pledging.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yes.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Here.
Councilmember Conklin.
Here.
Councilmember Missouri.
Here.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here.
Primal minutes for two seventeen.
Move.
Second.
Motion for floor is second, any questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yep.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yep.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson. Mayor Long.
Yes.
Comments from residents and city taxpayers? For the consideration of resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one.
Uh. The Ross Library is requesting to install a banner across Main Street from August twenty-sixth to September fourteenth uh for their annual book sale. I will handle the PANDA application for that.
What motion?
I approve of the resolution.
I will second.
Motion for a second, comments, question, yes sir.
I have a question, is that only for the banner, not for the the alcohol for the first night as well?
It is just for the banner.
Okay, was that filed?
Yeah, yeah, that was filed, but that's done.
Oh, okay, that does have to be.
Yep.
Okay, that's already done, approved?
Yeah.
Okay, I just did about both the things and we're only talking about one of the things, so just wanna make sure.
Any other questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yes.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
Or C, consideration of the annual Lock Haven Regatta request.
Once again, the Lock Haven Regatta Foundation is asking for their traditional closures and also borrowing things like picnic tables, the things that uh we normally do to help support that event, and that would be from six PM on August twenty-ninth to six PM on September third, twenty twenty-four.
Switching out.
So.
Second.
Motion is second, any questions or comments on motion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yep.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yep.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
Or D, consideration of a request for donation.
Uh after recent newspaper articles, individuals from Hope's Dream Rescue uh reached out to me to present to city council this request for potential funding, uh might get provide council privately with how much they have in their line item for donations for this year. Uh but if anyone is here from Hope's Dreams, if uh you'd like to say a few words, or if council has any questions, who do the right person to?
Absolutely, I'm Katrina Armstrong, I'm one of the three board members of Hope's. Uh we are a small nonprofit animal rescue that focuses on Center and Clinton Counties. Um we are requesting financial assistance from the city of Lock Haven to assist with our TNR efforts and veterinary assistance in and around the city. We currently work closely with the SPCA and their voucher program. Um any funding that would be provided to Hope's would cover costs related to TNR that are not currently covered by the vouchers. That would include medical treatments, antibiotics, pest treatments, wound care. Um we believe our assistance in tracking and altering will also help relieve some of the burden currently on Clinton County SPCA. Um and we will also be providing physical and monetary assistance to uh Lock Haven residents. Uh like many local areas, Lock Haven seems to have a large population of homeless cats. We get at this point about as many requests from Clinton County as we do Center for placement assistance. Um with financial help, our volunteers would be able to track and alter cats as well as assist residents in doing the same. This would drastically lower the amount of kittens being born, in turn keeping the stray feral population from increasing. During surgery, cats are also vaccinated against rabies, so that would be a health reason for the animal population and human population. Any funding provided to our organization would be placed in a separate account to be used only for the costs related to trapping and altering the cats of Clinton County. And we're also hoping to set up a medical assistance fund for Clinton County residents to assist with veterinary costs, especially spaying and neutering. Um it will allow more residents to keep their pets and possibly lower the amount of abandoned animals. The owned pet assistance, um there doesn't seem to currently be assistance for owned pets, just TNR, so we hope to fill that void. Uh we're also happy to provide any future documentation to the council to show how the funding would be used. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, you have a question?
Yeah, it's not so much a question, it's a comment. Uh I like the difference, and I know we have a problem, so this could be a partial solution to what what our problem is, and the difference between you and the SPCA seems like they they wait for somebody to bring a cat.
Yes.
Where do you guys go out and actively find these in a community area?
Absolutely, so we we set residents up that are able to do it on their own, but I myself am personally trapping every week in Center County currently um for like elderly residents that are unable to do the tracking and transporting on their own. So that's definitely something that we kind of the Clinton County SPCA and our organization work pretty closely together, there's things we need them for, and there's things they need us for, and the physically being on scene is what we seem to cover.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I I uh I know we have a little bit of discretionary money for donations. Because it is the city and it is city tax dollars, it's direct out of General funds, I would need to request that it's only spent on city residents, not outside, not in Clinton County or anyplace else, just the city.
I'm sure there's plenty that can be so busy just within the city.
Yeah, and then and then you did say you made documented, so I I would need uh I would like to see uh results, of course, so if quarterly you could report to us a little bit of how how you're doing, and with that documentation, of course, is the budget, where you spent the money and and you know, so that we can track it too, we can't just bump and give it and and not have any checks and balances. Uh the other thing, did you ask Clinton County at all for any money, or the Clinton County Foundation?
We have not.
Because they would be outside of the city, but practically, if we helped offset your expenses to uh to do that, uh I I don't mind talking figures now, if there's no other questions that
Anyone else have questions before we get to that point?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Look, Jeff, now go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I thought that she was before me. I just wanted to know, you said you were a nonprofit organization, are you a tax exempted nonprofit?
Uh yes.
There's five oh one C three.
Okay. That's all, thank you, go ahead.
Um how many volunteers do you have here locally?
Uh most of our volunteers, I would say, are in or around Lock Haven now. We actually have more on this side of things than we do in Center County currently.
Like five, ten, twenty, two?
Uh about eight.
I'm just curious. Got it.
I think in town.
It's just us, just us.
Tammy and I. But there's some in Castania, there's some in Pine Creek. Um but we we trap and we do TNR every week with multiple cats, so.
And our volunteers like myself that are in Belton or those surrounding areas are more than happy to travel also to do so.
How many animals did you collect last year? Or?
Not nearly as many as say Center County Paws or Clinton County SPCA, because we don't have a physical shelter, we're completely foster based, so that definitely the amount in a year that we take in and get adopted jumps pretty radically depending on how many foster volunteers we have at the time. I don't know offhand how many we would have taken in, but I would say it's probably around fifty.
Between the two counties?
Um yes, and we've definitely seen a jump within I'd say the last six months of getting far more requests from Clinton County, whereas the majority used to be Center County with an outlier occasionally, but now it's pretty well fifty fifty.
Do you take them to the SPCA, is that where you end up taking them?
No, so we so for the TNR, we go around town, so right now we're focusing on Fairview, um but Elsa has let us know that she has some strains that she would like to have TNRs, so we'll move down there after this. But we collect them, we trap them, we put them in our closet, um which I know is funny. Uh then the next morning, Tammy takes them to the SPCA, they get neutered, we pick them up on Friday or Tuesday afternoon. We bring them back, we have them healed for like twenty-four hours and we let them go, so the TNR is actually releasing them. We also have a number of fosters group up though, uh we have three group up, group hopes right now.
And we do try and take in any adoptable cats that we do find, if we happen to trap a friendly one. The majority that are released are not suitable for indoor homes, but it's still cutting drastically on the population.
Great, is that everything? Are you?
Yes, I have a question. Um and I know the answer to this question, but I want you guys to know the answer to this question. How much does it cost from like the get-go? So a trap, trapping a cat, getting them spayed, neutered?
So I don't have the trap costs written down, but a good one is at least eighty dollars. Um we found trying to get the cheap way out, we ended up replacing them and spending more money in long run. Um for a spay, um it is two hundred and eleven dollars, for a neuter, it is a hundred and twenty dollars. And then we also provide microchips and FBRCP vaccines, which protects against a spay. So that would be an additional cost as well, but it wouldn't we have that on our own on stock at Roseford, so that wouldn't be taken out of any of the city funding.
Anything else, Tam?
Um I will say that personally, since January, I have trapped fifteen cats in the city and had them TNR through either the SPCA. So and that's just with me alone. Um and we found out I have worked with Barb's daughter, actually, and taught her how to TNR, and she has trapped, I don't know, five or six cats at this point in the last couple of months.
And I don't have any kittens she has fostered and found homes for, but I dealt and dealt with.
So we're slowly but surely spreading that throughout the city and giving our ground cat population.
Developing a network, and I think that that's one of the things that we kind of, it seems like it's what's happening. It's a good network of people, and people understanding and educating about how to deal with this problem. It's a great step in the right direction.
Any else, Tam?
Are are they tagged, so we know we're not catching the same one?
Yeah, they are.
Oh, so I've been shipping or?
Yeah, yeah.
So there probably has to be probably some kind of tagging.
Yeah, and the ones that
You're checking out the motion.
Yeah, the ones
It's all far away to the door neither.
Yes, um the ones that we do through the Center County Paws vouchers, we also have microchip. So then they are, they have the ear tip, and then they also have a microchip.
Do we know how much money that we gave to the SPCA has gone into?
Okay, and that part of the discussion, Steve's going to talk money out, make sure everybody has like a loose question down the way, right? Okay, so we're into the money discussion now.
I don't remember what we gave them, I think five thousand.
Five, yeah.
Five of what we had out, the other words.
Right.
TNR.
And and that's up to this point, going forward from today. I was thinking if we gave him twenty-five hundred to start and see results and and catching the TNR and anything else, and then have them come back and and then maybe we can bump it again until we find a track record. So I think twenty-five hundred is a good starting point, just to, those traps at least you buy, you're really useful.
Yeah.
And and it's the other vet parry costs, you should be able to get a group rate, don't you think?
Yes, so usually whenever we trap the feral or stray cats, almost always they have some type of respiratory infection and whatnot, so that will be some of the things that the vouchers don't currently improve, that the cost would be over.
So we're already given to both organizations, if we give twenty-five, that's that's a pretty good commitment from us.
We'll raise that above.
I made a commotion for twenty-five hundred.
Do I have a second?
And and I'm sorry, Your Honor, can we clarify that the twenty-five hundred dollar donation is contingent on the funds being used in the city of Lock Haven, and in three months, if you come back, tell us how it's going, and give us a a report and an update, and then we can reconsider additional funding if it looks like it's a project that's working. Is that?
That's what he what he was alluding to, but that's good to clarify for the vote.
What we stopped before the money.
So you have that, Casey, right? We have a second.
I second.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yes.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
Or E, consideration of use of Triangle Park Pride and Haven Rangate event.
Brooks Peace and Clinton County Pride Alliance are requesting the use of Triangle Park on July twenty-first from seven AM, seven PM for their Pride and Haven event, which had to be rescheduled due to bad weather.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Awesome, yeah.
Motion for floor is second, any questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yep.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
We have any other requests?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Unfinished business, five A, consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero-two.
This is the second reading of an ordinance that was first read on June third, then advertised July tenth, seventeenth, and twenty-fourth, as required uh by Title fifty-three and the third class city code. Uh this is to widen a small portion of James Alley, where it adjoins the new Vice Gatzengo, which was widened in order to accommodate additional traffic that would go through there.
Do I have a motion?
Move.
Motion.
One second.
And a second. Any uh questions or comments on the motion?
Motion.
Recommend the motion, Tammy has the second. Any other questions, comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yep.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
Five B, consideration of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero-three.
This is the second reading of an ordinance to update bylaws of the Amity Holland Bay Ross Library as adopted by the Library Board of Trustees and submitted to council. Uh first reading was at the last meeting, and its second reading, if adopted, um they would be put into place and authorized as the new bylaws. The president of the Board of Trustees, uh Judge Johnson is here, if you have any additional questions.
Do I have a motion?
I have an approval.
I see.
Now I want to have it. Uh any questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yep.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
Okay. Five C, for the twenty twenty-four patching project.
Is um a state local even project, um rather than my fourth one, which offers which it does. There's some patches and some curving, curving um throughout the city, um states in the Gulf of Portobello. Went out to bid, um and they were open on June twenty-sixth, the lowest bid uh was wide excavation calling, an amount of nine five thousand thirty-four dollars. Um and after engineer review, they are recommending approval for of that bid and for on-line.
What's wish council?
Questions?
Go ahead.
The road bid is low, uh for twelve hundred fourteen square yards, they're half of what the next lowest bidder is, and we sure went off and asked them, you didn't make a mistake here, right? Because we don't want to put anybody on the hook. You know, for a bad mistake.
Well, no, not a bad mistake, um the wind dogs and did reach out to provide and confirm that that was their price, um and they are a newer company and they want to get their foot in the door, so that was offered by them, and they were comfortable with the price.
Thank you, I appreciate both, they're free, now make the move to uh accept a low bid. Why you can stop.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? Yes.
Um does the city know yet uh how or where the project might affect traffic patterns by chance, or is that something that the engine?
Uh it they're all small patches.
Right.
So we don't have to close any roads because of that. Uh but there are about a hundred and fifty total between us and Castania, Castania, of course, only has less than a dozen, but uh throughout the city, we have water, stormwater, uh and regular puddles and uh wastewater, so uh probably the largest area to be affected just because it has a lot of lateral lines that goes across it, is the very end of Church Street, that very last block, where we just redid a sewer line, but the rest uh will basically just be flackers for go around.
Oh. Thank you.
Any other questions? If motion is second, we didn't get a void. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yep.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
Five D, consideration of resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one.
Uh this is a resolution for the new traffic signal maintenance agreement, um as updated to include the uh Martin Street, just an avenue, second avenue light, uh we're working through that with the Pino Go grant funding, and the disagreement needs to be updated to reflect that, or confirm it, and move forward with finalizing engineering, with the progress of destruction. Uh so this is kind of the same thing that you saw with the PANDA upgrades years ago, um it's just adding that that lane as well as updating for sure.
Do I have a motion?
I'll.
Have a motion? Can I have a little second? All right, thanks. Any questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alexander.
Yep.
Councilmember Brandon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes.
E, notice award twenty thousand dollars to state Walk Works grant.
We rewarded um twenty thousand dollars from Walk Works for the uh production of an active transportation plan. Um this plan will help us out with a lot of initiatives, including the Bald Eagle Valley Trail, and coming through the Central Active Arts Corridor, we got funding from the TNCs on the arts to commit that. Um and just the regular day-to-day um bike scooter, skateboard uh traffic that we have and kind of safety aspects surrounding that, so not only will we plan that safe routes, but we'll also put some safety features, um use some striding, but also educate the community on how to safely uh ride and so, um we're happy about that, I did um going to reach out to commissioners, just to take their brains about how it works with the Bald Eagle Valley Trail, uh see if they're interested in buying efforts, uh and then we are required to have a consultant on board, the Walk Works program requires that, so uh we'll be getting someone on board probably hopefully by the end of the month, uh not by the end of August, it's a quick turnaround, we have to have this done in a year, so keep it going.
So would that be the extension of Bald Eagle Valley Trail over Hannah Street and into the city, and then connect from there?
So
Is that part of that?
The county's portion goes to the city line on Hannah Street. From Hannah Street to Main Street, that would be the city's responsibility on Main Street, it connects to the State Bike Trail, which goes on uh East Main and up Belton Avenue. And so uh we do have limited share of the road signage on that, uh but obviously, anything we could do to improve uh safety, especially if significant numbers start to come into downtown from the Bald Eagle Trail, when they complete their next section, but we want to be prepared for when they do that, that we're in a good space to welcome those people.
Other question? Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Just one, um other than the Bald Eagle Valley Trail, is there anything else planned for that funding, anything that we don't know? That we know of yet?
Um it's it's all community-led, so somewhere in the like our conference of plan, we'll have we'll have meetings, we'll understand what the residents want to see as far as like that, objects like that. Also, it is just planning, um it's not implementation.
Okay, thank you.
Over playground update.
I handed out a couple of flyers for related to the Overland Park community build, so it looks like around, um as a reminder, we're we're working with I don't know if I said this, so we are working with the Boone, uh the Pennsylvania Municipal League and TCR to build a new playground at Overland Park. If anyone has noticed over the past couple of weeks, the current playground is gone, so we will be putting a new one up, don't worry about it. Um but as part of the program, we are looking for volunteers, donations, and volunteers, so for the Saturday build day, we're looking for about two hundred people to help us build this playground, um we post it on our Facebook page, registration link is there, um these flyers also have registration on them. Um we're looking for volunteers to do just about everything, we have side projects, um including getting a mural, um doing a community garden, building picnic tables, planting trees, um and then towards the mini playground, we'll have a lot of different home safety and agri handed um building as well, so uh we won't just have, I mean, only adults over eighteen over will be allowed to build, but kids are welcome, we will have separate activities for kids, so they can also be involved and see the progress. Um and at the end of the day, we'll have a ribbon cutting with the municipal league and all the partners. We won't be able to play on it immediately, because it will still be fall service and everything needs to set, but it will be a good community adventure, so I just have these flyers in front of you, if you know any volunteers, any donors, um and I will keep pushing that on our Facebook page and the newspapers and everything, I believe. WSTV is also saying some stuff for us as well, so.
I'll add two things to what Abigail said, um several people here attended the Design Day. Um local children from the community actually drew what they wanted to see in the playground, that was incorporated into the final design. And if you were there, you absolutely can see there are lots of slides and there's a tower, and that was very important. But um things that local children who will actually play on it, they designed what is going to be there. Uh two hundred people, believe it or not, in one day will build an entire playground. And you won't believe it when you arrive at a vacant lot, but you will believe it at the end of the day, it's just phenomenal how many people come together, how well everything will go with the right direction for people. And uh we have significantly less mulch to distribute than other municipal projects, so um that's a blessing to many people. Uh we're also, because we have stepped up just touch, because it's Lock Haven, we are looking for a uh cooling station misting tent. Um to rent, so if anyone knows of one that is for rent in the area, let us know, but we have been looking into that. Because that will be a big help to people if it happens to be a very hot day. Uh and Abby has been working with different agencies to try to find different children's activities that day. But it's a big day, there'll be lots of food for everybody that volunteers and. Um hopefully we get a huge turnout to make exactly what the kids in that neighborhood wanna see happen.
Registration is free, but you you should register ahead of time just to keep everything flowing, um you won't need to be a waiver ahead of time. And your T-shirt is on, so free T-shirts for everyone who's involved. Hold that in the record. At night.
You guys have taken it for different.
I have this.
Different ones at the. At the. Please, yeah, uh I. Obviously, you know, Heather and I have taken part when we built the Tiger Dad period ago, that was. If you have never done this, please, you can't imagine how fulfilling it is. Be involved and and help to build something like this, I know that our contact. It's been almost twenty years. Who are twelve hundred volunteers over a five-day period. And it was a wonderful thing and and it's. You don't know what you're missing, come out and help out. Thank you. Um, anything else on that? Okay. Five G twenty twenty-four opioid distribution update.
Uh contrary to phone calls from people in the county, we are not distributing opioids. The. City has received notice from its attorney, uh the city originally had entered. The opioid litigation uh. Because of several settlements that have happened, uh the original. One against the distributors and Johnson and Johnson were settled, the city still has allocations to be received this year for that. Which are listed on council's memo, um number four of the uh distributors. Is just shy of four thousand dollars, number three will be distributed of Johnson and Johnson this year, that's about thirty-five hundred. And then. Uh new entities also entered into settlements, the largest of which is Walmart. Uh Walgreens and C B S. Uh are also pretty significant, but Walmart will be a distribution of this year of uh number one and two of six. And that will be almost fourteen thousand dollars. And three thousand dollars for Walgreens and C B S for a total distribution this year of at least an estimated twenty-six thousand dollars. Which is added to the twelve thousand dollars still remaining from last year's distribution or a total of thirty-eight thousand dollars. Also included in the council packet and in the packet that was sent to the media. Is the result of what council had weighed in and said they would prefer as uses, and so those still will be our guide. For looking for proper uses for uh the funds that are received. Uh by the city and we're still always going to be open to hearing any other. Suggestions so that those can be brought before council for your considerations as well.
Any other unfinished business?
I have none, your honor.
All right, six A new business, notice twenty twenty-three Act thirteen allocation.
Uh every year the city receives. An allocation from Act thirteen. The unconventional gas well fee, which is also called a drilling impact fee by some people. Um the Act thirteen fee for this year was estimated. At seventeen thousand dollars in the budget, it, the amount actually to be received is twelve thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars. So it is about forty-five hundred less than what was expected, the city usually puts that money towards either parks or paving. Um last year we did parks, the year before that, that is what paved a section of uh fourth. A very small section that meets Flemington. So the small section of the city street, uh we were able to do that in collaboration with Flemington and reduce the cost overall. And so uh that was paid for by Act thirteen funds, which was a great benefit.
Any questions on that? Any other new business?
I have none, your honors.
And you have.
Reports to their. Question.
Yes, sir.
On the F Y I reports, I was reading the minutes. Of the filtration authority. Uh I thought with them coming to the meetings and giving us all that free advice and. And direction and we should have done this, we should have done that, we should have asked them. And they should have asked, and all that. For weeks and weeks going on about. Process that we were going through to the guarantee that people in this county have water. And then I see it came to a vote for them to. Maybe take over the uh operate administration planning. And uh funding well share capital improvements, but it ended up an eight to three vote. I know we have representative on there, we have a council liaison, evidently you're you're up here president at. Could you explain to me how that went sour and how those same people were the ones that were sitting in this room? Saying we gotta work together, we gotta, you should do this and you should do that, and I'm just wondering. How and what fell apart that it didn't proceed to. To be to be a better system, I mean, they're the experts at it, why wouldn't they wanna have a say in it?
Well, as a liaison, I'm not a voting member, but as a liaison, I will tell you that our membership, the five members we have. Uh on that board voted uh three in favor and two in opposition. To since even the city reps, uh uh a couple of the city reps did not vote to support it, so. I'm, you know, I, can I tell you why? You'd have to ask them, I, you know, I uh, I think they were afraid and they and and. This, the, the staff at the filtration authority uh. Insist they don't have the expertise to do that, well neither do we, we hire, we hire engineers and consultants.
They sure do have bullets.
Yeah, no kidding.
So shut up or get out, right? Shut up or get out.
I do think it's fair to say, though, prior to, prior to that vote happening, we did have. A very productive, at least what I thought was a very productive presentation and discussion regarding moving forward on the joint authority. And moving that pro- moving that process forward, I think that. We. I I believe we're going to be having our uh. Memorandum of understanding very soon, and I think that the organization wants to see us do a feasibility study. Just so that we can bring everybody together, all of the ideas together and say, yep. This is why we're doing this, this is what's best for the region as whole, as far as the water and the future of the system is. So I do think we're moving forward with that, which will move those projects into that new joint authority anyway, so it's, it's for now, they're saying, they're saying no to that for now, but I believe that. They are going to have those projects in the not-too-distant future, keeping. Keep your fingers crossed.
As, as far as funding, um. The filtration authority is the way that the. Projects are distributed cost-wise. So the way it works now, the city pays everything. Then the city submits to the filtration authority how much that costs and the filtration authority gives the city a checkback for that. But the city also paid it, got billed by the filtration authority, paid the filtration authority, so it's suburban and then it gets checked back. So while that's happening, the city has money out for the project, plus money out to the filtration authority, waiting for that to come refunded. So it's kind of a round robin, instead of just suburban paying the city. We have this kind of double payment by the city for things.
So why don't we discussing at least the. Talking about how that works? I mean, e- e- even if we can't come to the, come to an agreement that they take the the project. To me, that's the real problem. Is that. We kinda have to front things until it comes back around and, you know, we're cash-strapped as everyone is. Um why aren't we? Instead of trying to, you know, say, oh, then you take them over, because that ends up looking like, oh, we're mad at you, you just do it. Why aren't we talking to them about the, how the funding works?
We did.
We did, and the answer to us was, it's worked this way for thirty years. What, why would we change it now? Those are people that have been doing it for fifty years. That made that assumption. Because apparently, apparently progress is not, is found upon by some people.
Who, who is the other uh uh representatives from the city on that board, when are their terms up?
I do not know the terms off the top of my head.
Just send us through the rail, you can just look it down.
Yeah, there are five members from the city on that.
And I, and I wanna, I want you, I, I want you to understand something too. The conversations that have been going on have been. I think have been very reasonable. People are, people are working really hard, we are talking about people who've been on these boards for a very long time. And people who've been doing some of this stuff for a very long time, and so it does take, it. It's going to. It's going to take. Some working together and everybody that I think anyway, everybody that's been involved and is working very hard together. This is kind of a separate issue, we were hoping to see some movement towards. You know, we're moving towards a joint authority, let's try to work together and work towards this, and everybody, everybody's been positive about it, so it is moving forward, it is just a challenge. Right now, it is not, it's not gonna be a fast process, but it is a process that's going forward, and I think everyone. Involved has been very cooperative and very positive.
Yes, once you say that, it just from a, I was not going to the meetings, it just looks like they're throwing the anchor around again, unless delay. Here's another six months, here's another year, here's another whenever, if we need to make movement on the board. Even though that experience is there and all that knowledge and the thirty, forty years, I don't care how many years they have, it might be time to turn a move.
You've got some, there's some younger people getting involved in it, there's, and there, and and this, the board of, I think the board is working hard towards sharing their institutional. It's not easy.
Yeah, hold on.
All right, anything else on, on the reports?
Uh yes, actually, I would draw people's attention. To the Pennsylvania Municipal League June edition of the Municipal Reporter, which has an article entitled. Live Love Lock Haven, the city of Lock Haven's approach to livability. Uh copy of that is provided to council, it's also available um. To in the packet that went to the press. And uh it's a really great article about Lock Haven's continual approach to making a more livable. Uh community for the people who are here. And so it was nice to have Lock Haven featured of the what, two thousand five hundred municipalities in the state. Um not only are we one of only nine of those two thousand five hundred that received the grant that Abby spoke of earlier tonight. Uh but it's always nice to be featured in a magazine of municipalities. Thank you to the Rangers for their help. For putting us on the map for that.
Well, I have a couple of things, one, where do we stand with the uh Assistant City Manager's position?
Uh I have an interview tomorrow with September.
Any idea when, how that's gonna, I mean, how things are gonna flesh out, when we'll have that position built?
Well, depends on how tomorrow's interview.
Um. First concert of the Sunday concerts, uh last night, it worked very well. Uh great performance and uh first time back on Sundays for a while. I think that's gonna help the attendance, and we are doing it every Sunday now, instead of um, you know. One Saturday and then not, and then back on and so on, I I think that should be helpful as well, so if it's Sunday night and it's. Nice, there's a concert on the river, so more people can get out, I thought it was pretty well-attended for being the first one, um. Casey did a great job, thank you for all your work. Uh also, um. What's that?
Friday night.
That's a Friday night concert, too. Um.
Every.
Every Friday night. Uh Triangle Park or Main Street, depending on how the closures go with that. Uh of course, jams will be happening, obviously, that's, that's always exciting. Um I heard from the board administrator today that they are working on, just for current months' knowledge, they're working on. Doing a ceiling project on their parking lot down there, uh they're gonna go, actually, they're gonna seal the alley. By the parking lot as well. Um so they're working with city manager chief about that, obviously trying to avoid. Activities we have going on when people need to make use of parking lot, because I don't wanna do it when. We shut down Main Street without you, so, so you're aware that'll be happening here. Within the coming weeks, I understand. Uh, does anyone else have anything to do with your council? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I want you to.
Adjourn, thank you.